Please, and the purpose of this workshop tonight is to review the draft ordinance regulating the display and placement of merchandise in the front windows of businesses downtown. Also, utilities manager will provide an update on the wastewater treatment improvements. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, sir. So you have before you a draft ordinance that is a result of conversations that have been occurring over the last several weeks. And I think just to try to move right into that, I would ask Jeff OMB, our building and planning director, to review the ordinance. It's really pretty straightforward, but if you would do that, Jeff, and then city attorney Sharp is here. Ron, why don't you come up here with this, please, sir?
Do you want to barge into the front of the room?
No, please do. And Ron is here to help us in the discussion as well.
So the ordinance is pretty simple and straightforward. It takes a section out of the CA, commercial aesthetic overlay zone, that's in our zoning ordinance, and basically describes a prohibition or a regulation on where merchandise can be displayed. So this is an addition. It's not in there now. It's not a change to what's in there now. It's actually an addition that says simply, indoor display of merchandise for sale on the premises shall not be displayed within 12 inches of the front window of a commercial type business. And in addition, any doors providing ingress or egress shall remain free of merchandise and signs, and the display of same on said door is prohibited. So does two things. It takes merchandise and signs off the doors. It takes merchandise out of immediately, being immediately plastered to the windows. Requires that that merchandise still visible, still able to see it, but it's actually, there's space between the merchandise and the window. Allows several things. It allows light in, allows vision in from the outside, and literally, as Mr. Sharp has done in the whereas, keeps it from being, having the same effect as the outdoor display of merchandise, which we prohibited several years ago now with the CA overlay And that's it.
Did you mention the doors?
I did, yes.
Okay, okay.
Did we, when we were walking through town, we mentioned something about the second story? Is that going to also apply on a second story building? Or did that mention anything about it in here?
The interpretation to mention here is directed towards the passing public, so it's, the intention is the first floor, but we also wanted to talk with you all about that, because that's something that, you know, it's easily written into the language, if that's the direction of the commission. I think when we walked downtown, the impact, the most impact is on that
Was on the ground level.
On that ground level, yes, sir.
So I was talking to somebody from a different city, not neighboring us, who struggled with this issue. It's a heavy tourism city as well. And they, the way they went about doing it, and the reason they did it was for public safety. So they, they did essentially what this is, a version of this, in a heavy tourist city, and in their case, the police department had asked for the, for the ordinance, so they could see in for safety. And that's why they did, which is, raises a good point, I mean, as a, as a reasonable method of looking at that, too, because there is a matter of public safety, and Gray is a fireman, like a former fireman, like it would be important to be able to look in there, and, you know. So I just wanted to mention that, that other city did that, and I thought it was interesting that they did that, too, so.
I think that has a lot to do with not covering the doors, as we talked about
Yeah, that's the big piece.
For visibility of both police and fire.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to acknowledge, too, that we do have the Gallinburg today and Gallinburg tomorrow groups that are interested in some of the things like this that we're dealing with right now, and also the future of our city. And I think we all are enthused, or at least engaged, with wanting to improve our product, which is our downtown business area more than anything, so I want to commend them for what they're doing, and also people showing up tonight would like your input, too.
Appreciate that. You know, it's interesting. Mike has mentioned Gallinburg tomorrow, Gallinburg today. Let me just real quick say that we kind of went the two different directions, because tomorrow is more about housing and traffic and livability and sustainability, and things are going to take a lot longer to, to, to effectuate, really, you know, to get moving. But we wanted to kind of declare a little bit of a today group about what honestly I want to call it, you know, crisis mode for a few things. But certainly some things that we can do more immediately, you know. That, the today group is basically represented here with Dan Booth and Slough Quig and all, and Mark Adams. Very small group now, that we intentionally didn't want to broaden until we just, you know, had a good feel of where you all wanted things to go. But having said all that, we have looked at this, and we've actually got three or four other things we'd like to mention, of course, as well. But, and I can hand these out to you, but we also think there needs to be, you know, obviously we've got to review existing ordinances, we've got to identify our problems, but there's the education part. We think there's a lot of businesses downtown that don't even know what our ordinances might be. How would you know if you just came in, if you didn't come out here and read through them? So we'd like to create an education, you know, and why? Because if we know the banner town looks, the better off we all are going to be. We think you're going to have to end up empowering some type of board, whether it's EDRB or something of that nature, to get to where we all want to get to. And we definitely want to talk about enforcement, code enforcement officer or something like that, we want, you know, we want to bring up to you. But, and there also ought to be a recognition program. Look at all the people, look at Kirby's new place, look at, I mean, I could just name a lot of people. You know, there's a lot of things that people are doing, and so let's recognize that one, this is what it wants to be like. And then follow up, you know, there's been a lot of things, you know, that there's, as Cindy, all of y'all know, you know, I don't know, six or seven different studies since 30 years ago, and if you get them out and you look at them, they're just all resoundingly the same. And in almost every one of them, it talks about what you're talking about tonight, it talks about storefronts. So I am thrilled and applaud you for, you know, for wanting to, you know, to step forward with this. In addition to the storefronts, I would beg you, and I know you saw my email properly, half a town did, but about the lights, these LED lights that surround these windows. And I've got some pictures here of that example. So why not put that in here, that you cannot surround your display windows with these cheap LED lights?
Nice.
What about buildings?
Well, we start at one place, Mark, and move on, but if you drive through town at night right now, and you see these windows all lit up, it's somewhat of a, it's definitely a random atmosphere. You can call it carnival atmosphere. It's everybody's trying to get attention, everybody's fighting for attention for each other. And, you know, that's one of the places I kind of wanted to start. You know, Chad's back here, we wanted to keep this out of the CVB world, because the CVB is in charge of marketing, and the CVB is funded by taxpayer money. But we spent a lot of money creating a brand, and the city has spent a lot of money burying utilities, and doing all these good things. Look at all the private developers that spend a lot of money to make town a lot better. So the appeal of town, if it's being tarnished by misuse of lights, Mark, back to your question, yeah, we got to address it. You know, it's just like we don't want a 13-story building, or we don't want people not building back in the setback. It's, why do we do that? Because we want the city to be appealing and a good customer experience. And there's just no way that us fighting each other, I want to put up pink light, Ryan wants to put up yellow lights, he's going to put up purple light, let's see who can draw the most attention. We're just, it's a self-defeating thing on how we want the ambiance of the city. So it's the exact same reason you're doing the storefronts. Why are we doing the storefronts? You know, to make it much more appealing. So I would love to see you address that. If not, it just gets worse. And there, you know, you can drive in town now, there's not far at all, when you come into town on the left, there's multicolored lights all over. Looks like Christmas when we're not in the winter fest, so.
And that started, didn't it, with the Christmas lights, and then people just leaving them there? I mean, how do we address that? Four months out of the year, we lit up like a Christmas tree, and when the rest of town, we don't want ones.
I think it also started because of the availability, the LED lights
That's exactly what it is.
Have come into, have come into be a technology, for lack of a better word, it's inexpensive to do.
I think, yeah, I think my issue with it is, is the ones that we have good examples of here are done cheaply, and they're not even done nicely. Forget the colors and all that, which I agree with everything you said on that, but these aren't even good examples of, of anything, of good color or anything.
I think there can absolutely be ambient light, accent lighting
Yeah.
Architecture lighting. I think that's where it goes to empowerment of a board and some better guidelines. So definitely, we want to light our buildings, you know, there is, there is attractive accent lighting for buildings, but there is also tacky lights, and that's what we're about. If we don't want to be about that, we're just going to end up with the product that we're ending up with right now. And I honestly think the lighting thing is almost in a crisis mode. But I wanted to speak to this ordinance real quick, because I know we're on, obviously a little bit late with time, and I certainly want the rest, anybody else to jump in as well. I think this is a great start, but, but I'm not sure, I already have questions here. It's a very short ordinance. For instance, what does this really mean, that you can just see through the door? How does Jeff go police that? Okay, it doesn't say the door can, has to be 100% clear, 70%, 20%? It just says the door needs to be open, that you can see in. I'm not sure what that means.
Actually, it says more than that.
No display on the door.
No display on the door.
Period.
Period.
No door interaction, the premises should be covered with any signs. If such signs shall block the visibility of those entering or exiting the premises.
And in the ordinance body itself, on section one of the code?
On this layer?
Any doors providing ingress or egress to the premises shall remain free of merchandise and signs, and the display of same on the door prohibited.
Is that on here?
Yes.
Okay, I just missed it, sorry.
Yeah, I do.
Ron, what's the, what's the penalty
Yes, sir.
The city can impose on that?
The maximum penalty the city can impose is $50 fine plus court cost. We've got a $50 fine and a $50 court cost, so it's $100. State imposes a $13.75 litigation tax that might be added to that. The $50 fine limit is set in the Tennessee Constitution.
Is that, how often does that happen?
It can be daily.
It can be daily.
It is daily, yes, it can be.
Thanks.
So you can have a sign, but no merchandise, is that right? As long as a sign that blocks the visibility, is that what's required?
No, you don't think you can have either.
Free of merchandise and signs.
Excuse me?
The doors are to be free of merchandise and signs.
So, Robert, this is in the, it says section one.
It's in the draft, right?
It's in the draft.
You have it?
Uh huh, that's what I have right here.
Right at the end of that section.
It says, by window signs, additional requirements for windows, no door
You have
Shall be covered with signs.
You have, you have the latest draft.
He does not.
I don't think he does.
He does not.
Okay.
That one, talked about signs as well, this one focuses on merchandise and doors.
So then no signs on the door at all?
Right.
Can't have, can't put my business sign on the door.
Another, what about above, with that, that piece up the top? You can put your store name there, could you not?
Yes.
A lot of people put their business name on the door, so just thinking these would be thought out a little bit.
Or you might have open or closed.
Enter, exit.
Enter, exit.
So before we get bogged down in that, because I know we don't have so much time, also, I think the healthiest thing is, and I'm sure it's where you're headed, this is a draft, and you're having a workshop, and you're going to have public input, and you're starting to get it right now. That's what I think we want, is for it to come out to be an ordinance everybody can embrace. And the 20%, 20%, is that 40%, Brian, is it still 20 and 20?
That percentage is gone now.
Okay.
This draft that they have before us takes those percentages out. It says merchandise has to be a foot back, and nothing on the doors, that simple.
So the windows can have as much as they want, as long as they're a foot back?
Correct.
What we, what we notice when we walk downtown, because here's the problem we have, you've got some people down there that have great displays, and they've done it tastefully.
Right.
We can't penalize those guys
Right.
For the people who don't do that.
Right.
Or at least in our opinion, don't do that.
Right.
So we, I mean, we felt like that that, we looked at that, and quite honestly, those that had kind of what we drawn up here, looked the best. Had a shelf, you know, where it was organized, and we're not penalizing people who have done it tastefully, because that's what you run into, too. You know, we can't, plenty of people downtown have done a good job. Not everybody, you know, has, so we saw as much good, quite honestly, as we did bad.
Right.
Quite honestly, I think we saw more
I agree with that.
Than we saw, than what we thought we were going to see when we, when we actually did it.
Right.
So, you know, that, I think that's kind of where we came up with, yes.
I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but I'm fixing to be Debbie Downer. You all are going to have a heck of a time trying to enforce this. These people are all independent merchants. I've dealt with them my whole life. They're not going to take this well at all. They're already mad at you all because they have to pay city taxes.
God forbid.
And, you know, the permanent business, I can tell you a jillion reasons that they don't like you five men sitting up there and the two extra.
I could probably triple it.
Yeah, but, and, in one person's opinion, whether it's good looking or it's not good looking, hmm, how do you decide? I just, I think it's a mistake.
I think we need to get, invite some of these people that are
That's what we did today.
Well, they invited out that we were having something like this, and
Yeah, they, yes, yes, sir, there was, yeah, there was an article.
Dan, I saw it on the local radio, or, or, next to them. Well, I have to agree with the vice mayor, yeah, he was maybe put on the radio, maybe put in the paper, but that, that's part of my inform here, is I'm not sure we emailed out to all the business community that
Right.
Drafted this ordinance or what was going on, so I would
It may not be a problem for them to say that.
But I also think that, you know, I hear, now that we see or hearing about this adjusted one, I would, I'm a little wary of still being able to look only a foot back, have, it's still going to be
Have the same thing.
I like the idea of it being 50%, but, you know, hey, you're making a step forward, you know what I mean? So if we make, you know, make a step forward, we can keep making steps forwards.
If you look at taking it off the door, and that's what we're talking about
Right.
It's not only for, you know, the aesthetic of it, it's also for the
Safety.
Fire and safety and all that.
Right.
If you, if you go downtown and you really look at the doors, take those doors, that cleans it up a lot, more than you think it does.
It will help, I agree with you.
It doesn't help, it, a lot, it's a lot better. So
Take out the doors, it'd look a lot better.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying in progress.
And I, and I think that's where we keep, we're fair, we're still being fair to those guys, because again, it's
If you leave your door open all day, I mean, most of them that are covered, they leave their doors open all day.
Not the day we were downtown.
Oh, well.
And probably not in the winter.
So how do you feel about the lights, Curry? Have you driven through, I know you've driven through town at night, I know you've seen them.
I think you're going to have a hard time legally.
Are most of them solid LED, or are they blinking?
Well, they're not supposed to be blinking.
I know that, but I mean
And, and the police department has put a pretty good effort out there to address that. Jeff has helped them with that, it's the reason he's shaking his head. So is that to say that if we all jumped in a trolley right now and ran downtown and it was dark, one might not be, one might be blinking, but, you know, then we warn them. There's been a few citations issued, I wouldn't say a ton, but
Not many, because people typically
Yeah, because people with a warning have, have corrected it. So we are really making a concerted effort to, via the police department, to, to enforce that.
So if they're not flashing, I like that, and I agree with that, and is that even legal? I know we've all started to turn, to turn, Ron, for some kind of an answer, but before he comes in.
The city has had a law against flashing, blinking signs forever.
Signs.
Correct, Ron.
Since the late 70s or 80s.
Signs, signs.
Flashing lights attract attention.
Signs.
The building department enforced that on lighting that I had on our building, as I tell, that had nothing to do with the sign.
Yeah.
There's some language in there about, and we had this discussion a little bit at the meeting that we had with you all, there is some language in there about attracting the attention
Yes.
Which is not limited to just signs.
Which you should be able to get to the question over here, is it legal telling them they can't do what we're talking about, because these are objects that are attracting attention, these LED lights in the windows. So you're, you're, we went through this at that meeting, there's, it was added in there about when we added the optics and stuff and that, when that went down, Ron, that there cannot be, this is an optic, these LED lights are optics that are designed to attract attention, and, and those are regulated, they have to come before approval.
Poor native optics, I think is what it says.
And they have to come for approval of the EDRB?
Pretty sure it's, this is an approval thing, this is not guideline, this is for approval.
Which you know is
Is what?
Is non, non, I mean
Well, but it can be according, I think, Jeff, help me out here, the way that part's written, if I want to put an object in front of my property, there's been a lot of talk about that, you've got to get it approved. It's not just a guideline, it has to be approved. It's different than signs.
If it's disapproved.
If it's disapproved, then you should be able to
It goes by in the commission, and then it goes, like, it just
There's not a regulation against it, there is
So I can put up any object I want to
It comes to interpretation of object versus light on a window, and that's, that's a legal, challenging legal position that, you know
If you want to regulate lights, it's got to be for some public purpose. It's got to be because they're flashing and distraction to passing motorists, some people, you know, are sensitive to flashing lights. It's got to be related to safety. It's got to be like the doors. If you take all that merchandise and signs off the doors, it's safer to get in and out if someone comes crashing out, they can't see someone coming in. So these, these regulations here are focused on those areas. If you get into aesthetics, you get very subjective. You don't have a, a master aesthetics ordinance or plan here in the city, and anything other than that, it's subjective.
How did we do the aesthetic overlay district, then?
Well, we did it, and certain additional requirements are imposed on that district, but there's nothing like it's, color palettes, types of materials, things of that sort, flashing lights.
But it's saying you cannot hang your merchandise on your doors, why can we not say you cannot put lights in your windows?
But the doors pose a safety issue.
For those bright lights, it's not a pose, a safety issue?
Bright lights are, flashing lights are, but again, who's going to determine what's, what's bright?
Is that Tennessee law, other communities?
Tennessee allows you to regulate those sorts of things, but there's not much of it around the state. Most cities do not get into that area, but Tennessee has recognized some cases that say you can regulate for aesthetic purposes, but otherwise, it's health, safety, and welfare.
But there are other communities that do this.
That's what he just said, he said, he's now saying the Tennessee law allows it, and he just said it didn't, now he's saying it does. So I don't know which it is, it sounds like you can regulate.
So, Ron, repeat what you said, because it sounds conflicting.
Tennessee in case law has said they recognize the right to the city or the state to regulate items for aesthetic reasons, billboards, things like that. It's not been used very much around. One example that I looked at here for this ordinance, City of Franklin, has a 12-inch setback from the windows. A lot of cities have a six-inch setback from windows for merchandise and signage. You know, those are things that we can do legally, but you want to regulate a pink light versus a green light? That's
I don't want to regulate lights peering in the windows. You know, Kirby says setback 12 inches, I don't disagree, it's, it's progress, it's going to be hell. That doesn't have anything to do with safety. In fact, you're going to completely block the windows, so why can we move forward and say no lights running these windows? When you drive through town, ever, a lot of these stores have these LED lights, or why don't we just put that in there?
And there are the lights, there are a lot of bad examples, but to Ron's point, there's good examples, but the problem is, is you can put two good examples next to each other, and then it's, they look like, I mean, when you've got all this hodgepodge, of people doing different things, I think it really detracts from the environment.
Who does it well, Logan? You know of any examples where it's, like, in cities where they do this well?
Oh, I don't know.
I can think of one that does deal with lighting, Ron. It's not in the state, unfortunately, it's in Florida, but St. Augustine heavily regulates that stuff, and particularly in their old city, you know, that's, that's where lighting and all that comes in. We might want to look at that and just kind of see how they wrote it up. Now, that, you know, that city has a lot of other challenges that, that make it difficult to do business there, I guess, is what I would say, but at the same time, there's a lot that they do right, you know? Maybe we could look and see what it is. I'm not opposed to fixing the light situation at all, but I, my only concern with it is, is those that do it well, or we need the ability to do something well to keep our appearance at night vibrant and good, you know, without, without turning it into a carnival, I guess.
I agree with you, but again, the problem is you have chopped up this
I know.
If these guys do their lights vertically, and the next guy doesn't
Oh, I'm totally with you on that.
And the next thing, it just looks, it doesn't look right.
Yeah, I agree, I'm to, I'm totally with you on that.
But all, but all of that's subjective, you have to have some standards in order to enforce them, and not be discriminatory.
I totally agree with that, and I think my ultimate, in our talks, in our group, is that we need to come up with a lighting ordinance, is that we need to address lighting as a whole. And that's probably, maybe even more of a tomorrow group, because this, that's not going to be easy, as you think about the different ways we have to light our buildings inside and out, and doing it in the right way.
How is that, how is that affecting our Christmas lights?
Well, I think you need to address that. So it needs, that's why I think we need a specific area that is lighting ordinance, and it's, it goes through, so, so if I, and another point is, is I'm a business, where do I go find that? I've just started a business, where do I go find it? You know, there's no section on lighting, there's a section on signage, or a section on this, such a, the end of the section talks about lighting, and it addresses these issues.
Why can't you just say no lot, no lighting, framing windows and doors? Just remove it off a certain area. Because what you're complaining about is mainly just
I think it's a start.
I mean, if you, if you start that, just say around framing and
I think the most important thing is, we all want to, I think most all of us want the same thing. There's been a lot of improvement in town, and there are some detracting elements, and I think we got to keep saying yes instead of no. We have to keep saying yes. You know, the community, if you look at these past studies, this has been said over and over and over for 30 or 40 years, this is the best thing for Gallinburg. It's quaint, it's charming, it's walkable, protect that character. And, and we all want that, but I just think it's going to continue to take more and more work to get there. Otherwise, it's, there's going to be, and I'll never forget that Snoring Report, Probst I think was the guy's name, and he said, don't go regulate this at first, let it become the culture of the community. You know, let it become the culture of the community and make improvements, and lead, and that's happened. City's buried utilities, the city's got the flowering program, a lot of redevelopment's been done by a lot of the landowners and building owners in town. And he said, but, and once you get to that point, then when you got that last, I'll use the word, 20% of the people that aren't there, then you've got to regulate them, then you've got to force them to get up on the program, and I think that's where we've gotten to.
I wonder if another place to address it would be is landlord leases.
But if we could be consistent, you know, you know, as, as a semi landlord, you know, I can't tell, if the guys across the street are letting them put lights up, my guys are, it's like, what are you doing to me?
Yeah.
You know, I'd much rather it's be one, all boats rise at the same time, and we do not have time to solve this tonight. I just think there's an urge, a yearning here to address the light issue as well. Code enforcement, you know, there definitely, you know, we, we do have money in the bank now, thank God for COVID and that way for us. And, and, you know, you know, and, and, and this is, you know, we need to, you know, and I know it's hard to hire people, but we just gotta pay them more. But we need to, and we need to maybe self-police this as well, turn people in or whatever. But, you know, we can get over to this miscellaneous signage and all that stuff, the, the, a lot of my comrades, they can speak up here. There's a lot of things that are on the books that we don't, you know, that we're not enforcing, the sandwich boards, the incidental signage, the general care of properties. We've got some pictures of the few things, it's not everybody, but the few bad apples, if they're not taking care of their property in the right way, it's on the books that it's gotta be kept up. So we, you know, we would love to encourage you and support you and help you in any way that we actually start trying to enforce this. Now, everybody doesn't want them to come pick on me, Ryan and I don't want you coming looking and finding my signs that are too many incidental. But I really don't think that's where we're at, you know, we're gonna laugh and giggle and sure, we're gonna be, now wait a minute, but in the end, we've seen what, you know, we, we see what's going on in town. We've got, uh, you know, we've always had a jewel here, it's just time to keep raising the bar. We saw how many more people could come here when they weren't going somewhere else. And I think the better we make our town in this, in these ways, and, and I think we, we do have a lot of laws in the books that, it is political, but we wanna support you. We don't want them coming here and saying, why are they picking on me about their signs? We wanna be able to come in and say, this is why, because we're trying to make the town better.
Apologies.
Anyway.
The cantina.
I've run out of my lot of time, Dan, Mark, Mark is private sector Mark over here now.
Yeah, so I, I, I think one of the things with the lights and, uh, it may be subjective still, but you'll see some, some, uh, businesses ta, in town. For the LED lights, they may have four different colors of lights in one business. So even if the lights were all white, I mean, at least it would look consistent all through town if they're doing it, so. But right now, you've got, uh, there's one business I can think of, he's got at least four colors of lights and half of them are not even attached, they're just dangling. Uh, on the outside of their building. But, um, but I think, you know, that's with the lights and that, what I have seen in the last year or two and, you know, world's gone through a lot. Gatlinburg's gone through a lot, but just homemade signs, you know, they've got homemade signs in their windows and, you know, that's, that's what's really making it look tacky, some of the things. It's just, you know, clutter and.
I, I mean, I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
The help wanted and the, I mean, it's, it's, and we've had a lot of discussion, Jeff's been cracking the whip on that a little bit, I think, is that fair to say, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, about the, the homemade signs, cause that was a pet peeve of mine and particularly, and it was just, it was driving me crazy, pink poster boards in windows.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that, it's not, that we, we should be dealing with on a regular basis always.
I don't know, I, I mean, this goes back to the shop owners, but also I, I think there comes a sense of pride in here as well. So I can take you up and down and see some of the shops and the, the product that's in the windows is faded. Like whether it's T-shirts or boxes, cardboard boxes, I mean, it's all faded, I mean, you know, I don't know where that regulation comes in, or is it even regulated?
Mark, uh, Robert, uh, Logan, Diane, what's our next step, you think?
Uh, we, we, we feel a step at a time is important, because what happens is is these big grandiose things never get done.
Right.
And we're here to talk tonight about supporting this about the windows, I think you should move forward with that. I hope you do that, I hear y'all have already thought it through, you wanna try a solid twelve, I'm a team player, I'm there with you, let's see how that works.
Well, the good thing is we can always change it.
Try to add lights, Commissioner Reagan's talking about, let's throw that in there for lights, maybe you don't throw it in this ordinance and you run out of time tonight, but can we dig right back into that? Can we focus on this lighting?
The ordinance is not on the agenda.
Yeah.
This is strictly a draft for this time.
Okay, so that's up to you all, is it too late to try to get that in here now? I know Ron's worried about, you know, some legal stuff, but I just know, I mean, I, I was here late one night, living, out of town, I'm not here tonight. I drove through town, I got fired up, you cannot drive through town late at night and look around and not go, this is not my town. You get up the next morning and there's no lights on, we still got, I, I got my town back, it looks like it's Mountain Village. You drive through at night, it looks like carnival.
It's tacky sales, I'm sorry, but it does, it has for.
Tacky can still sell.
It has for another year.
We, we, we don't want to be trashy saying, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't think that's what you're saying. I think you're, I think you're worried about is running off and leaving a market, I don't wanna run, run off and leave the market either.
There's a place for tomahawks and moccasins, there always has been.
But believe me, there's T-shirts in Carmel, California, I spent twenty plus years out there, it's one of the nicest cities you'll find.
Yep.
Guess what they have, T-shirts, but it's how they display it, it's how they, it's lit, I'm not trying to, you know, there's gonna be a certain amount of market that wants to buy. I don't think it's tacky, I think they wanna be able to buy what they wanna buy, we shouldn't tell them what they can sell.
We saw that example downtown, you know, we, we saw the better shops that, that didn't have stuff on their door, that, that displayed it correctly. And they were selling the same things as, we, we saw that example, and that's why I, I think that, again, I don't know, I wanna speak for everybody, but I think we were pleasantly surprised. You know, when we went down there and saw that at least some people are doing it right and.
I, I saw about personally like a dozen shops that I, I thought needed to be dealt with. You know, that was kinda the number that, and by the way, some of these are examples on the lights, that, like they're double offenders is what I would call it. Um, so it's not everybody.
I, I, I think part of, to your answer, Commissioner Vice Mayor, I think you're gonna be amazed how many people are gonna come in and say the same things that four of us are saying. I think you're gonna see a ground swell of the community say, yes, let's keep making town better and better. And you're, and yes, you're gonna have a few in here saying, you're gonna hurt me and everything else. But I think the ground swell of people are gonna say, this is gonna make us all better. Especially something like what we're talking about here, this is not, when you come to me and tell me I gotta spend five hundred thousand dollars in front of my building to make the woods done in metal, I'm like, whoa. But you come to me and tell me, get rid of my temporary signs, get the lights out, I've already made a few of my tenants, get their lights out, that's not, that's a manageable request. I think the community's gonna, the lodging community, the attracting community, I even think, not all the retail, I think there's gonna be, to Kirby's point, some of the retailers are even gonna support it, hopefully. There's one of the biggest retailers in town out there, Dan. Well, both of you.
Well, I think, you know, another named business I can tell you that I've witnessed over the last couple of years, they keep adding more and more and more and more and more and more and more signs. I mean, I, I said to Dan the other day, I said, this business is out of business, they've just yet to recognize they're out of business. So what they're trying to do is just put more and more signs to tell people what they've got, but the reality is, is the signs aren't working to get them more visitors.
So what I think we need to do, I'd like to see us address the lights, and I'd like to see how this improves, if you wanna give the twelve inches a solid, let's get it in place and see how it improves.
I think your biggest with your, your lighting, I called Dan Gertig, who's an architect and been in one of nice places, and I said, how would you? I sent him a picture of the lights, I said, how would you do this? He goes, how, I said, how would you measure the brightness? He says you can do it by how many Ks, you know, when you go buy light bulbs, three thousand K, four thousand K, five thousand. And you know, if you go back to way when people would have the plain old Christmas light, he says, have Christmas lights out, it wasn't that bad. You go in town now, right out front of the village, or somebody has green lights and it just, it hurts your eyes when you see it. I mean, and it, whether it's a safety issue or something, I think you could say that very easily if you're driving a car, especially when you're older like myself. And you see those lights that just blind you, and it's hard enough to drive at night anyways. Uh, so I think that's one way we could tackle that, and I don't think you can just come in and go, sorry, you can, can't have it around your doors and your windows. But you can have those bright lights all over your motel or your restaurant. That's really picking out, you know, you need to say, you can't have it, those bright lights maybe so close or something. But you, you don't need to let people do it just because of a restaurant. That's really, it goes back to safety, it's not really fair. Uh, and nothing gets, I'm, I'm just throwing that out. Uh, the twelve, the windows, I think it's a great idea, we gotta start somewhere, we're gonna be in trouble and I commend you all for doing everything you've done. I've talked to Robert today and he kinda thought I was going after him, but I'm not, I'm all for this completely. I think we have to stop, like some shops as in town have nice glass shelves that's not packed. A lot of times it's the stuff that we wanna see, that they have on those shelves and not some other things we see. And what happens if I decide to close in my window and then you can't see, is that a safety thing? You know, and I brighten up that window?
Window or door?
Window.
You can do it.
And I have to still go twelve inches back.
Back, you can do it.
You can, you can do it in this ordinance.
Anybody's asking if they have a shelf and they have a handbike, that handbike has to be twelve inches back now.
Yes, correct.
Correct?
Yep, and there's a, there's several businesses that do it exactly that way and it seemed to work okay.
Well.
And, and like, and like I say, look, just cause we, we put it in ordinance, doesn't mean we can't change the ordinance if it's not working, it's super easy. A lot of times we look at the stuff like we've written the King James Bible and it has to be there like that forever, and that's not true, it's just. It, I expect there to be ten things wrong with this by the time it goes through and we just fix the ten, and that's just how it, how it works, you know, I mean. All right, maybe five, but it's, it, to your point, we have to start somewhere, I mean, we have to.
Thank you for doing it.
I just, I, I, and I, you know, listen, I work for Ripley's, right? Like, I mean, it's not like I don't like a carnival atmosphere, I mean, we, you know, we're a sideshow company for God's sake, so it's not, but I will say that it can be done correctly. And, and it, it, you know, I fight with the city on colors, I fight with Logan on colors all the time, visual assault's what he calls my stuff, right? And that, that's a matter of taste, I mean, and honestly is, but at least it's a good natured fight, it's one we can have. This other stuff is definitely a safety concern and I think that's how we address it.
Ron, can, so can I, just theoretically, could he, could, 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 there be a board that is totally subjective? I like that or I don't like that?
You can have a board, but when you get into aesthetics, unless you've got some pretty concrete standards, what are they gonna decide? That decision's gonna be the makeup of that board. They like signs.
Muted colors, let's just go muted colors.
Okay.
If the standard is muted colors, don't look at me, Ryan.
I'm already looking at it.
Not, not pink, purple and yellow.
Yeah.
Then is that something that, that is enforceable?
I think if you could tie that back to safety, that flashing green lights or any kind of green lights, uh, hurt the eyes of the motorists, distract them or whatever. You could say it's gotta be, you know, just LED white lights. So yes, you can, you can, limited, uh, research on that and, and limited regulation.
I think we do need to understand what we can do in Tennessee and what we can't, I know in California they can sit there and go, I just don't like that barrel. Give me a different barrel, and I'm serious.
When I did this the last time, it's been close to fifteen, twenty years ago, seventeen states had said you can, cities can regulate aesthetics. Uh, at that time Tennessee was not one of them, since that time they've had about three cases that said under, under limited circumstances, you can regulate aesthetics. Doesn't mean that with today's environment you couldn't, uh, go beyond that, but, uh, we've got a crack in the door. And if you wanna do what seventeen other states have done, I think you could.
And maybe under the premier stats or something, I think the state legislature wants, I think they want this county to be as good as it can be. We're, we're, you know, we're one of the aesthetic sections.
To me, this statute is getting the concrete. We need to get the regs that, that are, you know, and then, you know, then, then we're, we've got twenty percent of people that are, we think are not doing it the way we want to. You put in, now you go in, you try to regulate that, that's gonna, that's gonna shrink our number down, cause those people are gonna go to the regs and they're gonna live and live by the regs. And then we're gonna shrink down the problem even more.
If I could say, you know, I'm on EDRB and I've been on for a couple of years, we often do, uh, you know, review, we always review colors and designs and things. And I, I just say that, this is my experience, that maybe fifty percent of when we say we don't like this color, we don't really, you know, our, we like to go without white. You know, take this to a beige and that, maybe fifty percent of them listen to us, it's not enforceable. But, but our board is able to impress, encourage, uh, ask them to do it. And so, you know, there is a little bit of stuff that goes on like that and, and it could continue, and by, you know, we could help continue to, to take it that way. Without having an, an ordinance, I mean, it, it is frustrating sometimes because we say, we told them not to do that and they did it. And then Jeff or Dave would say, well, we couldn't tell them, they can't, we can't find them, it's not legal, you know, so, but there is a, there is an element of, of, of where we can encourage them. For whatever good that is.
So in an effort to, um, for this moment, wrap up a conversation before we go into the, uh, regular city commission meeting. Um, to be, what I'm hearing is let's press on with what has been drafted. Okay, I think I have a question mark about the lighting piece. And it, I, I guess would be good to get some input from you all if you want to see that added into this. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, it does have police powers, because that was important to us that that be the case. Obviously a police officer going in and enforcing has a, uh, more impact than a street closed building inspector. So this has to go before planning commission, the next planning commission meeting is when, Jeff? The seventeenth maybe, when's the next planning commission?
Oh, it's November, yeah.
It was November, yeah.
The, the next November, maximum.
Well, while we're doing the ordinance, let's add in the lighting, on the, uh.
The only thing I don't.
On the perimeter of the windows.
I totally agree with the lighting, I don't know how to add it in, like, I'm not sure, you said by Kelvin, I could see that, but we need to think about how that would all shake out, I guess. You could do it, the lighting around the doors, like you just put it on.
Yeah, around the perimeter of the windows.
Yeah, you could, you could, you could throw that in on that, which would be.
Once we do this and you sit there for thirty, you, you get it done. You'll walk through town again for your mom, let's take a look at this, revisit it, if you don't like it, then change it again. You gotta take this away from the statute.
Mayor, I, I.
So.
The perimeter of the windows.
The perimeter.
Starting, let's see how, it's a start, so go for it.
Yeah.
It's always changeable.
Okay. Kirby, Commissioner Smith, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, you know, what about Christmas?
Winterfest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go crazy.
Yeah.
But Winterfest doesn't last till June, right?
Right.
Christmas does now.
Well, and I, and I would ask that that actually be put in this, restated in this ordinance. So that we have no doubt that this is the timeframe of Winterfest and to Robert's comment, you know, all bets are off. But I do think that's a good thing to restate in an ordinance process like this, if we're going to add in the lights.
It would be smart at Winterfest to make sure we're not, I'd love to put my logo up fifteen more times than winter lights. I don't remember what the, what it says right now, I can do is for, that's lights, but anyway, people can be pretty creative.
But you want it in this ordinance rather than a freestanding ordinance?
Which part? The lights?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's what they're, so that's what we're saying, I think that's what we're saying.
I don't need another workshop.
If we're just talking about windows and doors and that, we can put it, we can put it in this ordinance, we wouldn't have to have a separate one.
This is easy to do.
Yeah, if we're going outside that, we need.
If we did talk about around the window, that's.
Windows and doors.
Yeah, and I think that's what's being abused, is around the borders of the windows.
But if you get beyond that, then you start getting too subjective.
Yeah.
There's a place out here on three twenty-one that was one of the first ones to put up white LEDs, multiple story building.
Yeah.
You pull out there across from Ogles Vacation Motel. Y'all remember that, it was very blinding when you first pulled out to come out three twenty-one. So, keep that in mind. There's three or four different floors, the mountain mall, a lot of LED lights.
Yeah, I've heard of them.
I, I will leave you this, I would like to say, um, I've run into, uh, Jeff Almbie and Greg Patterson, some of the other commissioners in town. I know you all are concerned about this as well, but it's just good to see Jeff and Greg in town, running into them in the mornings and stuff and, yeah, I know Jeff's doing some drive-bys at night, morning, noon and night and stuff, so.
I don't know that drive-bys are the right term.
Yeah, yeah, but, uh, but it is good and I think we do acknowledge that there is some, uh, that you all are moving in a positive direction, forward direction for us, and we appreciate it, so, thank you.
Well, we don't wanna lose what we have in Gallinburg, we've got charm, we're different than other places, we wanna maintain that. And we want public input, which is the reason for the workshop, thank you all for, uh, giving us input. And we keep working on it as a community together and make us better than we are right now.
I think we need to communicate as good as we got Seth and we got Chad sitting in here, communicate as good as we can jointly with the community about what we're, what we're doing. You all are doing it, we're doing it and why, and, you know, so that, I, I think that's just healthy, there's nothing like communication.
I may have the mountain press reporter here at the city, so I'm sure she will help.
You know, we can also, you know, everybody has a perspective and theirs will probably be great, but also we have been, you know, in our internal ability to let the community know. We got this great Lindsay newsletter we put out all the time, a lot of times we put out, we get Seth one out and that is, either however you wanna work this, or we let them know what, why we're doing, what we're. A lot of times we put out, we give Seth one out and that is either however you want to work this or we let them know what, why we're doing, what we're doing.
Can I say again, uh, from my perspective here, uh, I've been wanting to consider and, and ask Commissioner Cindy and everybody to see if we want to go live stream again. We did it, of course, during, and, uh, we have the technology here and it's been upgraded to the technology that we can do live stream. So that's out there if you all want us to start that. That could be done next meeting, workshops, city commission meetings. Uh, everybody in the world could watch it. It could be good. It would be that. I just want to throw that in.
I just want to mention again, I got a lot of responses from those emails, the people that don't want to be as vocal as me, that were extremely supportive of this. Logan just said, nobody wants to be vocal as me. I, I'm just, I think you'll be amazed. I, I don't think you all will be amazed, but, uh, you know, it's hard to do. If it was easy, we'd already done.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate y'all for coming.
So.
Thank you, sir.
We got, we got.
We all stayed for the meeting.